Everybody, and thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. There were quite a few important things we had to discuss in closed-door session. But I thank you for your staying here, and now we'll begin the meeting.
Mayor, if you would just announce the termination of the closed-door session?
Okay, the executive closed-door session, the city commission is now terminated, and the public meeting is now reopened. The public meeting is the conference meeting, and we're going to continue to recess that until the conclusion of tonight's regular meeting. So let us now begin the regular meeting of the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale this September 5th, 2023. Let us, may I ask you all to please stand so we can together recite the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Just like to ask you all to join the commission and the rest of the people here this evening for a moment of silence. In particular, I'd like us to take this moment to also remember the former county mayor, Ken Kichel, who passed away this past week. And please keep him in your prayers. Thank you. That's right. Who, we also, Tom Powers, who's the former president of the Republican Executive Committee here in Brereton County. He too passed away this past week, as well as Jimmy Buffett.
Elliot Richardson.
And former Senator Richardson. We need more than a minute now. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trent Tals.
Here. We just have one agenda announcement. It's just a correction in CM4. The district affected is District 4, not the one that's in the agenda. We have one change. R6, the city manager has asked to remove this item. Other than that, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended? It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved a second, and please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals.
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda as amended have now been approved.
Which is CM4 is the one in my district?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. We have a couple presentations, actually four tonight. Is Bonnie Clearwater still here? Yes, thank you for your patience. Commissioner Glassman is here to recognize Bonnie Clearwater with regard to years of service at the NSU Art Museum. Bonnie, please step forward. Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pleasure. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale. Proclamation in recognition of Bonnie Clearwater on September 5th, 2023. Whereas, NSU Art Museum Fort Lauderdale, positioned at the gateway to La Solos Boulevard, is dedicated to enriching the cultural landscape by offering world-class cultural programming, exhibitions, and educational opportunities to the residents of Fort Lauderdale and visitors from around the world. And whereas, Mrs. Bonnie Clearwater, an esteemed art museum director and curator, committed to advancing the arts, fostering underrepresented artists, and curating internationally acclaimed exhibitions, commenced her role as director and chief curator at NSU Art Museum Fort Lauderdale a decade ago, responding to the call of Nova Southeastern University and the Board of Governors of NSU Art Museum Fort Lauderdale. And whereas, since assuming leadership of NSU Art Museum Fort Lauderdale on September 3rd, 2013, Mrs. Clearwater has introduced numerous educational initiatives for people of all ages, including Museum on the Move, Mini Muse, Teen Art Council, and monthly adult workshops. And whereas, Mrs. Clearwater advocates for the principle of universal art access by offering free entry to the NSU Art Museum Fort Lauderdale for children who are 12 years old or younger, families who are part of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, all visitors on the first Thursday of each month, and Fort Lauderdale residents on the last Sunday of every month, referred to as Neighbor Day. This philosophy ensures that various segments of the community can enjoy the museum without any cost-related barriers. And whereas, under Mrs. Clearwater's visionary leadership, NSU Art Museum Fort Lauderdale has blossomed into a paramount cultural institution, showcasing world-renowned art that mirrors the city's diverse population and fostering unparalleled opportunities for local artists, thus enriching downtown's economic vitality and enhancing the city's overall appeal. And whereas, the Nova Southeastern University community, the NSU Art Museum Board of Directors, I'm sorry, Board of Governors, and staff seek to acknowledge Mrs. Clearwater's immense contributions of time, expertise, creativity, expertise, creativity, and the remarkable prominence she has brought to NSU Art Museum and the entire city of Fort Lauderdale. Now therefore, we, the city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, as Bonnie Clearwater Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale to honor and celebrate the exceptional dedication and impact of Mrs. Bonnie Clearwater on the cultural enrichment of our community. And dated this, the 5th day of September, 2023, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalas.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Glassman and the entire commission and mayor. You've heard enough from me. I have to say, of all the accomplishments we've had over these last 10 years, the thing that I am most moved by is the impact we've had on the next generation. So I would like to introduce one of the recent graduates of our teen programs, Celestina Francis, who is a resident of District 3, who would like to say a few words about the museum.
Thank you, Bonnie. Hello, everyone. My name is Celestina Francis. I am 19 years of age and an active member of the NSU Teen Art Council. My specialty is figurative oil painting, diligently illustrating the human experience realistically with strong Caribbean influences. My motivation for my art is to overcome past religious trauma and oppression while gaining a strong sense of identity and high self-esteem. Art became the agency I used to navigate narrative therapy. When I first referred the decision of being an artist to my loved ones, they questioned the sustainability and profitability of my career choice. I knew without a doubt that this is what I wanted to do, but I began to lose confidence and was in the path of being a shadow artist, a person pursuing a real job instead of being an artist or totally forgetting it. My first impression of the museum was the quality and variety of works done by immigrant and women artists. I finally had a reference of my goals, and I gained a supportive and nurturing team, including Bonnie, Lisa, Michael, and others. Not only were the tools available, but we got to effectively use them to gain the experience and have a plan of execution for career pathways. A couple months ago, we held our own teen art exhibit, which was very successful, resulting in 300 patrons visiting our opening reception. It gave us the exposure we needed. As a result, I'm able to break the glass ceiling on what myself and my loved ones thought was possible for me. And I can trust the team at the museum to support me. I have confidently decided on pursuing the careers of film direction producer designer and art director, merging design and architecture to create tangible, trauma-informed, safe spaces for community wellness in the future, further proving that art is a real career option for me. And as a past immigrant, being included in this conversation about resource allocation is very important to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I now would like to invite the Vice Mayor, Beasley Pittman, to present a proclamation. Can I ask Mr. Maxwell Adelstein to please approach the podium?
Hello, everyone. It is my pleasure tonight to present this proclamation. It reads, "From the office of the mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale, proclamation in recognition of Hunger Action Month, September 2023. Whereas, the persistent issue of hunger and poverty continues to demand the attention in the United States, the state of Florida, and the city of Fort Lauderdale. And whereas, the city remains steadfast in its mission to raise awareness about addressing hunger and providing resources for well-being of the Fort Lauderdale residents. And whereas, a significant partnership, excuse me, a significant partnership has been established between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Feeding South Florida, with the primary aim of raising public awareness on vital objectives and dispensary rolls of food banks. And whereas, this collaboration seeks to promote and cultivate broader community support with the intent of allocating additional resources to efficiently combat the hunger crisis. And whereas, more than 1 million individuals, including 500,000 children and seniors in South Florida, rely on food and grocery items provided by the members of Feeding South Florida annually. And the achievement of Feeding South Florida in the distributing of over 90 million pounds of food during the span of the year of 2021 to 2022, throughout its extensive network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and community organizations underscores its pivotal role in battling hunger. And whereas, food banks across the nation, including organizations like Feeding South Florida, have joined forces with a shared goal to orchestrate a wide array of events throughout September, these initiatives are designed to inspire and engage local communities in a collective mission of combating hunger with their respective regions. Now therefore, we as the city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 23 as Hunger Action Month in the City of Fort Lauderdale, dated this, the 5th day of September, 2023, signed by Mayor Dean Trentalas." Would you like to say something?
I'm always bad with these mics, but I'll try to project a bit. So, the proclamation covered many of my talking points that I would have shared with the dais here. However, I'll speak from the heart. As a grandson of a Holocaust survivor, having a family history of, you know, my grandfather not having any food for that matter, food insecurity is something that strikes home to me and many people I know. What we say is many families and most families in this county and all over South Florida are one quote-unquote disaster away from being food insecure. Food insecurity is nameless, faceless. It doesn't have a race, ethnicity, or creed. It can affect anyone. So, we at Feeding South Florida are here to help everyone. And we won't stop in our mission until we can end hunger or alleviate food insecurity in a very strong and powerful way. We aim to serve 1.2 million people this year, and that equates to 25% of the state's entire food insecure population. We look forward to partnering with the City of Fort Lauderdale and many other municipalities in our mission, and look forward to continuing this conversation as the year moves forward. So, thank you all.
And thank you, Maxwell, for all the great work that you do on behalf of the entire community. And it's an amazing challenge you take on, but thank you so, so much for being there for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd now like to invite Commissioner Sturman, and please come to the podium. Barbara Markley, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Broward County. Hello, Barbara. We have two people up here, two? Oh, Gail Moore. Is Gail here? Oh, there we are. Gail from 211 Broward. Guys, come on up here. Welcome. Don't be afraid. I don't bite. At least my kids don't. They don't bite. I'm gonna give one to you to hold, and I'll read the other one. I'll give them to you both in a second. You ready? "First of all, thank you very much. This is dear to my heart. That's the same proclamation. And then I'll give you a few minutes to say hello. Whereas, every year, over 48,000 Americans end their lives. In the state of Florida alone, a person succumbs to suicide approximately every two hours. And whereas, suicide, a national endemic, takes the lives of nearly 7,000 veterans annually, standing as a prominent cause of death for first responders. To enhance the battle against this crisis among our heroic first responders, Hero for Hero collaborates with 211 Broward. Partnership has given rise to a crucial initiative, providing peer support specialists to these responders and their families. In times of need, our community stands ready to offer unwavering support thanks to this endeavor. And whereas, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital Association, and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry have declared a national emergency in child mental health. Since 2007, suicide has increased among people ages 10 to 24, thereby becoming the second-leading cause of death for this age group. And whereas, it is important to acknowledge the signs of depression that may lead to thoughts of suicide, including speaking about wanting to die, feelings of isolation or hopelessness, increased use of drugs or alcohol, and severe mood swings. And whereas, equally vital is understanding the most effective approaches for preventing suicide during moments of crisis. This entails inquiring whether the individual is contemplating suicide, ensuring their safety by limiting access to lethal methods like firearms, poison, and prescription drugs, and actively seeking assistance from a professional. And whereas, the League of Women Voters of Broward County provides significant leadership in suicide prevention through community education and the creation of their Lock It Up! Gun Safety Program, encouraging safe firearm storage to prevent suicide. And whereas, 211 Broward is a live, 24-hour, comprehensive helpline, providing all people with crisis, health, and human services support, and connecting them to community resources. If you need help or know someone who's in a crisis, dial 211 or call or text the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline by dialing or texting 988. Now, therefore, we, as the city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Aware Month, signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean Trentalas." Ladies, thank you so much. Do either of you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. I will be, sorry, a little less verbose because some of which has already been covered. We know that CDC's provisional data says that 2022, we will see almost 50,000 people die due to suicide. We know that in '21, or 2021, rather, the Florida Department of Health reported over 3,300 deaths here in South Florida, the highest age range being those who are over 85 years old. Yes, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for those between ages of 10 to 14 and 20 to 34. Imagine 10-year-olds being so stressed and so overwhelmed that suicide is their only answer. Over 17% of youth reported emotional abuse, and 40% of youth reported feeling sad or hopeless, as per the Florida Youth Survey. We know almost one-fifth of high school students said they have seriously considered and/or planned their death by suicide. Suicide rates have increased significantly amongst Black and Indigenous peoples, and SAMSHA reported 1.8 million people attempted to die by suicide in 2021, of which 900,000 were between the ages of 12 and 17 years old. With the induction of 988, we have an easy-to-remember, three-digit number for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. This is 24/7, and people can dial if they are experiencing suicidal crisis, substance use crisis, or if they are concerned about a loved one who may need crisis support. Instead of calling 911, individuals can speak with trained counselors who begin with the least invasive interventions. They attempt to de-escalate, and if unsuccessful, the person may elect for a mobile crisis unit to come to their location. In cities that have already introduced mobile crisis units, the number of people taken into care by law enforcement has drastically reduced. Our Hero for Hero program sees that first responders are able to connect with other first responders to obtain that crisis support, referrals, and address additional needs. These first responders are made up of peer support workers, current and former firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, medic, and correctional officers certified in peer counseling. And our My Florida Vet program offers veterans opportunities for emotional support and crisis support by a veteran who can understand the challenges of re-acclimating to civilian life. We want veterans to know you are still part of a team, and you can still count on your brothers and sisters to help pull you out of a difficult situation. Suicide is a community problem, and it is up to our community to find answers. I leave you with a quote by Jermani Kent. "Be dedicated to change the world in which people see mental illness at all levels of society. If not for yourself, advocate for those who are struggling in silence." Thank you.
Well, I don't have quite as much to say, but that was beautiful and perfect. I'm coming at this from a different angle. Of the suicides every year, half of them are by guns. And we have, the US has 12 times the number of gun suicides as any peer nation. And that is because of all the unlocked guns. 54% of gun owners report not practicing safe storage. 5 million kids live in homes with unlocked guns. Locking up guns saves lives. Studies have shown that suicide is an impulsive decision made in less than an hour and sometimes in less than five minutes. If the gun is locked up, then the impulse will pass. They said nine out of 10 people who have attempted suicide and survived it never try again. So, it's a permanent solution to a temporary crisis. But if you're trying it with a gun, the chances are you're going to succeed because it is the most lethal method, and it's 85% fatal. And so, we have given out 35,000 gun locks, and we are trying to prevent suicide. Turns out, of all the gun deaths, the vast majority, 65%, are suicides. People are always surprised to hear that. But suicide is the most gun deaths in the country and in Florida. They far outnumber homicides. So, I brought gun locks with me, and I also brought our bumper stickers that says, "It's easier to child-proof your gun than bulletproof your child." And I also brought with me the United Way Suicide Prevention Rack Cards. So, if anyone wants any of these, I'm happy to leave. I have a whole bunch of them. And we'd like to thank you for this proclamation and thank you for your support over all the years. And I will go anywhere and talk about gun safety, even bar mitzvah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you so much.
Now, I would like to invite Laura McCoy from our Neighborhood Support Division, who is here to help us recognize the 12th graduating class of the Neighborhood Leadership Academy. It's all yours.
Did I get that right?
Yeah, you're good.
All right. First I'm up here. So, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commission, staff, and neighbors. Again, my name is Laura McCoy, and I'm here to congratulate and represent for the 12th graduating class of the Neighborhood Support Office, Neighborhood Leadership Academy. Sorry, I'm already twisting my words.
Take your time, take your time.
So, the Neighborhood Leadership Academy is a five-week curriculum that the city has offered for a couple of years now. And we're here to recognize the 12th class. The class was able to The class was able to interact and learn about the city budget, code compliance practices, meet various commissioners, and really get a dive into what local government is about. So as part of the class, they got to learn about the Police Department, the Fire Department, interact with various different areas of local government that you otherwise wouldn't be exposed to as just regularly visiting your city hall. So this is a very interactive and hands-on program that we're proud to have here in neighbor support. So this here shows the class's initiative as part of their project. So every class has to do a class project. And they decided to hone in on the Norfolk Elementary School in District 3, where they rather, I'm sorry, where they rallied up for collecting donations for school supplies, for hygiene kits, school uniforms, sanitation products, laundry detergent. And they were really able to restock the Norfolk Elementary Resource Closet, which is something that's really amazing, because now the children will have access to all these different resources year-round for the entire school year. And it just makes for better, a better school year for both the teachers and the students. So, real quickly, we have some of our graduating members up here. We are graduating 19 participants this cohort. We've got about six left that are still here. But none the other, they're still here, and they're really excited to be here. And I'd like to give some time to Suzie, our class leader, so that she can give you more of a perspective of how the class is making an impact.
All right, great.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to participate in this program. We enjoyed so much learning about how our city works and our different departments. And the project was just amazing. My classmates are amazing. We worked so hard to stock this closet. The, it's late, I'm so tired.
Yeah, we all are, don't worry about it.
We worked very, we worked very hard to stock the closet and meet the goals. It was so important. I do have a couple of statistics. One of the things, the first, the first thing they told us was uniforms. So we were able to accomplish 60 zip-up jacket hoodies, 436 shirts, 270 shorts, 964 pairs of socks, 431 pairs of underwear. And another need was laundry detergent. Kids were being bullied in school because they didn't, parents did not have the resources to have laundry detergent. So we were able to put 100 bottles of laundry detergent in that closet. That's 2,100 loads of laundry that will be done throughout the year. And kids are going to go to school with a clean uniform. They're going to have their dignity. Parents are not going to have to worry. Aside from our project, we were such a class of volunteering. We had members that volunteered at Care's Day. Others did the neighbor lunch, Community Court, Free Little Library, and many other things. The Rotary Club of Fort Lauderdale gave us a grant, and we were able to expand on the resource closet. And we also had a lot of inspiration from the Chief Service Officer, George Herschka. And he's back there. He was really, he was really our mentor through all this. And that's that.
We had a lot of fun with the restaurants.
Oh, yes, and we must thank Bona Italia in Wilton Manners hosted us, and we were able to do that. And the Fitz, the Fitz Bar, did a fundraiser for us. So we accomplished a lot for the kids of Norfolk.
Great, congratulations, and thank you for the good work you did. And I hope you learned a lot about the city and how we operate, and hopefully you'll be our future leaders.
And if I may, Mayor, I want to thank the class, the 12th graduating class. I did have the pleasure of meeting them the day that they unveiled the closet at Norfolk. A group of individuals with so much heart and passion. And it really shows, and really appreciate the initiative and how you all brought it together to make it happen for Norfolk and the neighbors and the youth at Norfolk Elementary. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Job well done, well done.
And thank you, George, for always being a mentor to the classes and to all the volunteers that serve the community. Thanks so much. Okay, so at this point, we'll now be able to continue on with the regular agenda of the evening meeting. Now, for those of you who have not come to a meeting before, the city will consider consent agenda items. Those are the items you see at the beginning of the agenda, which the commission will vote on all at once, unless there's a commissioner that chooses to pull an item and will vote on that separately. If an item has not been pulled, and yet you wish to speak on it, I have several requests to speak here. And if I hear that your item has not been pulled, then I will ask you to come to the podium, and you'll be given a couple of minutes to speak on that item before the commission votes on them. So Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you wish to pull? Vice Mayor?
CR1.
Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman?
None for me.
Okay, so we have CR1, and I see that Sister Robin Merrill has also wished to speak on that. So Vice Mayor, did you want to say a few words before we open that to public comment?
We'll go ahead and open it for public comment. It was an item that was requested to be allowed to speak on.
Okay, all right, great. Is Robin Merrill here? Did she leave? Okay. You had nothing, nothing separate that you wanted to say on it?
I know that in regards to affordable housing, it was an opportunity to highlight affordable housing and moving forward to include it in conversation in the future. So that was the point of pulling it.
Okay, very good. Also, Tony Spalding, Tony, are you here? Come on up. You asked to speak on CM4, CR3, and CP2. So now's your time to speak on them. So CM4 has to do with the dock lease, with the rubber duck holdings. Let's see. CR3 has to do with the resolution imposing special assessment for lock clearing. And CP2 has to do with the agreement providing for annual sidewalk asphalt and paver emergency repairs. Go for it.
Correct. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. So CM4, I'm sorry, I didn't have any time to do the research. It said District 2, but I saw that it was for the area on the New River that I frequent, which is District 4. And I was wondering why we were doing, why this came up. We have a private company that's going to take over administration of a public docks and then utilize some of those public spaces for their own company, for their own purposes. So I don't know much about it, because I didn't get a chance to talk to my commissioner about it, because it didn't say it was in our district.
Okay. Is that CM4?
That is CM4. And I, as you know, am opposed to any public space being used by a private business for their own profit. And that's what it's about, yes.
Keep going.
So CR3, imposing special assessments for liens and cleaning up, right? I'm just hoping that you all have a lot of oversight there. You know, like you heard me speak last time I was here. Our code and zoning came down pretty heavy on me about stuff they had no clue they were talking about. And I could have been, you know, one of these people. So please, before you start going in and taking people's personal property and making it hard for them to live, get some oversight for those folks. CP2, sidewalk. So you've got a lot of sidewalks that aren't ADA compliant. As somebody that was taking care of an elderly person that really needed those sidewalks to be ADA compliant for wheelchair and walker access, I'm hoping, I just don't see that that's enough money to get all these sidewalks that aren't ADA compliant.
It's not, it's not enough money, but this is an annual contract that we have with this particular company, FG Construction. So to the extent that we, the City Commission allocates money for sidewalk repair, replacement, and compliance, this is just a contract that we have with them to participate in that program. The city has many, many miles, hundreds of miles of sidewalks. We get to them as we can. We've done quite a bit in the last few years. But you're right, we're still not ahead of the game, but we're working towards that.
I don't want a sidewalk in front of my house so you can take any money for that and put it, you know, into this other stuff.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Hold on, what was your issue with CR3? Go back to the second one that you talked about. He doesn't feel you should, we should be leaning property. We should be very careful about our imposing liens on people and taking away their property because of non-compliance with code enforcement. And you had some issue, personal issue that you...
Oh, yeah, I think you're aware of it, right?
And did you want the city manager to address that or not? Well, they can, you can always go, you can contact the city manager's office if you have a... Do you still have a problem?
I don't know yet, I'll find out in a few more days.
Okay, all right. Okay, and Jason Crush, you had signed up for CM2, and Robert Robbins for CR5, but that's just for questions only, so we'll just put that aside. Okay, so are there any other consent agenda items that anyone would like to speak to separately? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
No move. Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Stop, 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 stop. I have to pull CM2. I represent Group Latitude LLC, and I need to abstain from that vote. So except for CM2, can you please amend your motion, Commissioner? Glassman, who made the motion?
Okay.
Commissioner Sturman, did you make the motion?
I seconded it.
I'll move it with that exception.
With that exception.
CM2, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, could you please recall the vote?
Yeah, just to, also just to confirm, the CR1 is also part of this consent. Are we doing that one separate?
CR1?
That was the one that Vice Mayor had brought up.
Well, she just wanted to point out an issue, wasn't it? She wasn't looking to pull it.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on CR1 and then go back with the consent or not?
No, we're voting on all of them except CM2.
Okay, got it.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and all those consent agenda items are now approved. CM2, I have to abstain, so would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
And Mayor Trentellus abstains.
I abstain, so that's approved. Moving on to M1, this is a motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for the rink at Wonderland. Where's Wonderland? District 2?
You don't know where Wonderland is? Didn't you ever see the Peter Pan movie? Really?
Go ahead, Tinker Bell.
Okay, someone like to move the item?
Yes, actually, it's not, it's an event that'll be at the Solos Ocean Side Park. It's not that there's a place called Wonderland.
I know.
The event is called Wonderland.
I understand.
Yeah, okay. Just want to help you if I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been moved, has it been a second?
Second.
Moved the second. Who moved it?
You moved it. I moved it? Yeah.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and M1's approved. M2, motion approving the purchase of switchgear at the George T. Lomar Wastewater Treatment Plant, Wesco Distribution. Someone like to move the item?
Yes, I'll move it.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions with regard to this item? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and the item's approved. We now move on to NP, Neighborhood Presentations. Is Mr. Schneider still here, William Schneider? I don't see him. I apologize, Mr. Schneider, if you were here, that we started the meeting late. Please try to come back for our next meeting, and we'd be happy to hear you speak. You scare me, Mr. Donaldson. Okay. R1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes. For the September 19th Resolution, Nuisance Abatement Board, Chris Smith, nominated by Commissioner Sturman. Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Linda Fleishman, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And also, we're going to have a motion at the 9/19 for the Greater Fort Lauderdale Transportation Management Association Executive Board. Currently, Commissioner Glassman is serving on that, and we had a vacancy, which will be filled by Commissioner Herbst. And so we'll have that...
What board is that?
The Greater Fort Lauderdale TMA Executive Board.
Oh, right, right, okay. Thank you for doing that, Commissioner Herbst.
My pleasure.
Enjoy every minute of it.
I have no doubt.
All right, and for tonight's resolution for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, it's Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. That's a consensus appointment. Audit Advisory Board, Eric So, nominated by Mayor Trentellus. The Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Board, Stuart Levy. And he's for the category of the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce Beach Council Representative. Lori Johnson, primary member. And Michael Berry, alternate member for the Westin Fort Lauderdale. Anna McDermid, primary member. And Alex Casares, alternate member for the W Fort Lauderdale. Rizwan Ansari, primary member representing the Bee Ocean Fort Lauderdale. Lisa Namor, primary member. And Michael Monroe, alternate member for BMR. Samuel Fierstman, alternate member. That's for the Ritz-Carlton. Mike Fleming, primary member. And Stephen Zunt, the alternate member representing Marriott Courtyard. And Fernando Calvo, alternate member representing the Sonesta Beach Resort. Board of Adjustment, Jason Hagopian, nominated by Commissioner Sturman. Patricia Rathburn, nominated by Commissioner Sturman. Caldwell Cooper, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Central Wastewater Region District Advisory Board, Commissioner Herbst will be serving on that advisory board. Code Enforcement Board, Alexander Schneider, nominated by Commissioner Sturman. Carlos Lang, nominated by Commissioner Sturman. Community Service Boards, Latrinsa Greaves, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Nuisance Abatement Board...
Is she in the house?
Nuisance Abatement Board, Avigdor Pumper, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Parks, Recreation, and Beaches Board, Deborah Rosenbaum, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And Alex Colazo, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Martha Gutierrez Steenkamp, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And I have one additional name that wasn't on the reso, and if we could add this one as amended, for the Homeless Advisory Committee, Robin Martin. That's a consensus appointment, nominated by Commissioner Sturman for the subject matter expert. And that rounds it out for the day.
Okay, are there any additional nominations from the commission? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
And that's as amended?
As amended.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, authoring or nominating, if applicable, Board and Committee Members as set forth needs to be attached here too and made a part hereof. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and those appointments are now made. Thank you to those who have agreed to participate, your commitment and sacrifice to our community to make it a better place than it is today. R2, Resolution approving a grant agreement and authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from the Florida Department of State, awarded to the City of Fort Lauderdale for a small matching grant for architectural resource surveys of the Dorsey River Bend and South Middle River areas. from the Florida Department of State awarded to the City of Fort Lauderdale for a small matching grant for architectural resource surveys of the Dorsey River Bend and South Middle River areas. Do I hear, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a grant agreement authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Florida Department of State in the amount of $50,000 for architectural resource surveys and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Florida Department of State to accept such grant funding and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and R2 is approved. R3, Resolution Approving a Grant Agreement and Authorizing the Acceptance of Grant Funds from the Florida Department of State awarded to the City of Fort Lauderdale for a small matching grant to digitize records of the Sailboat Bend Civic Association, conduct oral histories, and create an exhibition for a project entitled "Telling the Story of Sailboat Bend Historic District." Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a grant agreement authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from the Florida Department of State in the amount of $50,000 to digitize records of the Sailboat Bend Civic Association in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, conduct oral history interviews, update an existing educational website, and create exhibits for a project regarding the story of the Sailboat Bend Historic District, among other things, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Florida Department of State to accept such grant funding and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and R3 is now approved. R4, Resolution Establishing a One-Year Code Enforcement Lean Amnesty Program. Anyone have any questions? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing a one-year code enforcement lean amnesty program, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and R4 is approved. R5, Resolution Repealing Resolution Number 20-211 and Adopting a New Fee Schedule for Development Permits, Landscape Permits, Permits Regarding Historic Preservation, Administrative Review Permits, and Other Engineering, Urban Design and Planning and Zoning Fee Fees Pursuant to the Unified Land Development Regulations. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, repealing Resolution Number 20-211 and adopting a new fee schedule for development permits, landscape permits regarding historic preservation, administrative review permits, and other engineering, urban design and planning and zoning fees, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Uh, yes, thank you.
R6 is pulled.
That was R5. R6, Resolution Providing Notice of Intent to Enter into a Comprehensive...
That one was pulled.
Right, that was pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. R7, uh, hold on just a second, I was given a bunch of... Okay. R7, this is a quasi judicial resolution vacating a 16-foot utility easement located at 3020 South Federal Highway Air Park Executive LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. I have no disclosures. Commissioner Herbst?
No disclosures.
Vice Mayor?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Okay. Two people have signed up to speak, but just for questions, so if there's nobody else wishes to speak on this, would someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll on closing public hearing.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on R7. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
So moved. Introduce.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating a portion of the 16-foot retained utility easement recorded in Official Records Book 13390, page 438, lying adjacent to lots 5, 6, 7, Block D11, Dixie Cut Off Section, Crescent Park, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 6, page 5 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located west of State Road A1A, north of southeast 32nd Street, east of South Federal Highway, and south of southeast 30th Street. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and R7 is now approved. R8, Quasi Judicial Resolution Vacating a 40-foot utility easement located at 3020 South Federal Highway Air Park Executive LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. I have, Commissioner Herbst, any disclosures?
None.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Nor do I. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Two people have signed up to speak, but only for questions, so we're good with that, right? Okay. Someone move to close public hearing?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on R8. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Resum, move.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating the north 40 feet of a retained storm drainage and utility easement recorded in Official Records Book 13390, page 436, and being the north half of the vacated southeast 31st Street and a portion of southeast 6th Avenue lying between South Federal Highway and the east line of Section 22 Township 50 South Range 42 East, lying adjacent to lots 6, 7, 8, Block D11, Dixie Cut Off Section, Crescent Park, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 6, page 5, all of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of State Road A1A, north of southeast 32nd Street, east of South Federal Highway, and south of southeast 30th Street. All said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved. OFR1, it's the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 10, Vacation Rentals, to modify the vacation rental registration process to revise the qualifications of a responsible party, vacation rental standards...
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, you skipped PH1?
Um, I did. All right, we'll back up. PH1, it's a public hearing on a quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from single, residential, single-family, low-medium-density district and residential, single-family, duplex, low-mensity, low-medium-density district to parks, recreation, and open space south of the New River and north of southwest 5th Court, City of Fort Lauderdale, is in District 4. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. I have no one to sign up to speak on this. Any disclosures, Commissioner Herbst?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Okay, so, no one has signed up to speak, like I said, and someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on PH1. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
In an ordinance amending Section 47-1.6.2b of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale on Schedule A, revised compilation attached there too, and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from RD15 residential, single-family, duplex, medium-density district to residential, single-family, low-medium-density district to parks, recreation, and open space district, all of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, Riverside Landing, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 176, page 20, the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of southwest 6th Court, east of southwest 14th Avenue, west of southwest 11th Avenue, and south of north for New River, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved. Now moving on to OFR1, this is regarding the vacation rentals, to modify the vacation rental registration process, to revise the qualifications of a responsible party, vacation rental standards, the process of renewal of registration, and suspension of the certificate. I have two people have signed up to speak, Barbie Pearson and Brian Donaldson. Is Barbie still here? Hi Barbie, wanna come up and speak for a couple minutes?
Hi, I'm Barbie Pearson. I'm Secretary of the Lauderdale Beach Home Owners Association, and the board and the neighborhood asked me, first of all, to thank you all for supporting its residents by continuing to strengthen these vacation rental ordinances. Very happy that this is taking place. We've got about 20% of the neighborhood has vacation rentals, and the noise monitoring addition in particular addresses what is seen as the most invasive and annoying problem caused by poorly managed short-term rentals. And that's the most important thing, is that to get these short-term rentals under control and managed properly, and we thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Brian Donaldson.
I thought since we started our day together, we might as well end it together.
It ain't over yet.
I am here this evening talking as the president of the Birch Park Finger Streets, which is recognized as the Birch Park Beach HOA. As you know, our organization was pivotal in helping to put together the original ordinance back years ago, and I was here before you in February asking for a revision to, to increase. We have found that the, in the properties that we have convinced through our conversations with, with managers that weren't necessarily effective, to move to this noise-aware and other type of applications has actually improved the relationship between them and the neighbors, and I'll tell you why. So if we are, I think I outlasted the opponents, and I happen to be a realtor, and I spoke to the Realtor Association representative that was here during the break, and showed her how it could actually benefit managers, and so I think that's why she went ahead and left. The big positive is...
You scared her away.
I showed her the, the opportunity to make this a positive. So the positive is, is that you can, by putting in your guest's phone number when they arrive, or be prior to them arriving, you have their phone number from the reservation, you then share with them, "Welcome to the property." However, I just wanna show you, on the back fence, there's this noise alert, and you'll receive a text, along with me as the manager, before the neighbors call the police on you, you'll have the opportunity, since you're getting an alert, to change the noise level. And that has really helped a lot, because of the fact that the guest then realizes when they receive the text that, oops, somebody else is gonna be coming. That has saved us in multiple times of having to call code enforcement, police, et cetera. So for example, the other night, there's a vacation rental behind me that does one-night rentals, and on a Wednesday, 1:00 a.m., I could hear, you know, on the other side of the house, the thumping started at 1:00 a.m. By the time I got ahold of the manager, he said, "I've got the noise alert, they've been told, but they're not answering their phone." So he was over, I gave him a courtesy and said, "If you get over in 15 minutes, we won't call code, and we won't call the police." So it does happen that it's a benefit. The other benefit is, is that we have found that we have some neighbors that like to complain, even if there's not really a complaint. So we've been able to then show that neighbor that the noise alert never went off, and we have identified some neighbors that just, if the group isn't of their same ethnicity, they tend to call the police, and it's unfounded, because we have this application to be able to show that. So it's a positive, and I appreciate your support in approving this, and I know that it will help a lot of neighborhoods, it'll help on city staff levels, and I think that you will get less complaints by your constituents. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Including us two?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna get there in a second. Hold on just a second. We don't move to close public hearing on this, right?
No, you, you don't have to.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Is Chris here, Chris Cooper? I don't know of him, or maybe city manager, either one of you two?
Anthony's here and...
Okay. For the benefit of the people in the audience, and we've read it, but the audience are well, people watching at home, you know, there's been a lot of, especially in my district, and a lot of visibility about this issue. We've seen it, but could you just, once again, highlight the, the big, the big points on this, on this ordinance? I mean, noise, obviously, the fines and all these other things, just a, a quick rundown[1523.66]
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Portia Garcia, Development Services. So some of the major things that we're doing with this ordinance amendment is, one, requiring a noise monitoring device be placed at the vacation rental. That noise monitoring device would not allow city staff to hear the conversations, but would provide a decibel alert if the noise at the property exceeds the city's limits. Another thing we're doing is we're increasing our penalties. The reason being is that we're hoping with increased penalties, it will deter violations. And we're also increasing our civil citation amounts. We were previously issuing civil citations for between $250,000 and $1,000. We've increased up to $5,000. And so we're basically increasing penalties as well as our noise monitoring.
And also penalties for not registering and things like that, too, correct?
Yes.
And of course, the state does preempt us what we can do, but we're sort of going to the limit now, right?
Right. We're within our limits, yes, Commissioner.
Well, thank you very much.
Portia, isn't there also an aspect of this with regards to the magistrate and considering suspensions?
Yes, there is. We still have our suspensions in place for three violations. We would, of course, go before the special magistrate. The magistrate has the option to suspend the license or revoke the license for up to 12 months, and so we're still carrying out that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Portia or anybody else? Okay, thank you, Portia.
Thank you.
There being no further comments, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Article 10 Vacation Rental of Chapter 15 Business Tax Receipts of the Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to clarify defined terms to revise conditions requiring vacation rental registration application requirements to modify vacation rental registration process, to revise the qualification of a responsible party vacation rental standards, the process for renewal of registration and suspension of the certificate of compliance and providing for severability repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Absolutely, yes, and thank you, Steph, for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and the item is approved on first reading. OFR 2, excuse me, an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the city's Code of Ordinances for Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater, providing for increases to tapping charges, water rates, wastewater rates, master meter charges, service availability charges, sprinkling meter charges, and private fire service protection. No one has signed up to speak. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Are there any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Chapter 28 Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Sections 28-76, 28-141, 28-143, 28-144, and 28-145 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for increases to tapping charges, water rates, wastewater rates, master meter rates, service availability charges, sprinkler meter charges, sprinkling meter charges, and private fire service protection repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and OFR 2 is approved on first reading. OFR 3, first reading, an ordinance amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table and Schedule 6, providing for a 3% general wage increase effective October 1st, 2023. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone have any questions? If none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table and Schedule 6, and special employees providing a 3% general wage increase to all non-bargaining unit employees and all Schedule 6 special employees, and providing for severability repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and OFR 3 is approved on first reading. We are bumping up against 10 o'clock. I'm not sure how much longer the meeting is going to last, but I would ask that someone move to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock. To what time?
10:30.
Wait, wait, we still have two more meetings in addition to this. Do we have to extend those also?
We have two more meetings?
Yeah, we have to finish the conference, and we have another meeting.
We have OPAM, right.
Do we have to extend those or just this meeting?
Well, they, just this meeting. Those meetings come separately.
Those can last after 10.
Well, we'll see.
So let's make it 11 o'clock. Is that okay, Commissioner Herbst?
Sure.
Okay.
He won't be here after 10:30.
You can do whatever you want.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, is motion on the floor to extend the meeting till 10, till 11 o'clock? Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and the meeting is now going to be extended to honor before 11 o'clock this evening. Okay, moving on to ordinances of second reading. This is OSR 1, second reading, an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 9 Building and Construction, Article 2 Permits and Inspections, Division 2 Fees, and Chapter 25 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 13 Fees, Division 1 Fees to Adjust Permit Fees for Services Related to Land Development and Permitting. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Chapter 9 Buildings and Construction, Section 9-48 through Section 9-54 and Section 25-325 Engineering Permit Fees by amending Building Permit Fees related to land development and permitting of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for severability repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on second reading. That's OSR 1. OSR 2?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
One second before we begin. Mr. City Attorney, could you give me guidance once again what to do with OSR 2?
The state on the record that you are abstaining from voting because of, that the item nears to the personal gain or loss of your employer.
Okay, and do I mention the employer and all that, or just that one second?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I am recruiting myself for abstaining, or how would you? I'm abstaining for discussion and voting on this item because of a potential conflict of, because of my employer.
Okay. So, OSR 2, an ordinance amending the spectrum development of regional impact. This development order to allow up to 15,361 square feet of senior citizen center use and update the authorized agent, conditions of approval, and process for changes to the development order. One person has signed up to speak, but only for questions. And if no one has any questions, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending ordinance number C-84-55 as amended by ordinance number C-86-13, ordinance number C-89-24, ordinance number C-90-97, ordinance number C-93-70, ordinance number C-98-24, and ordinance number C-0340 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, which ordinance is approved and amended, the development order for the spectrum development of regional impact located at a portion of Section 16 Township 49 South, Range 42 East, South Commercial Boulevard between Northwest 15th Avenue and Northwest 21st Avenue within the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, amending the authorized agents for the developer, approving a senior citizen center use, removing the requirement to provide bus shelters, modifying the requirement for the approval of changes to the development order, and finding that the proposed changes to the spectrum development of regional impact do not constitute substantial deviations from the requirements in the development order, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, and providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and that is now approved on second reading. Congratulations. OSR 3, second reading, public hearing, amending the quasi-judicial ordinance, vaciating a 50-foot wide by 300-foot long right-of-way for the portion of Southeast 4th Avenue between the Tarpon River and Southeast 11th Street. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I don't have any either that I can recall. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Okay. No one has signed up to speak. Someone please move to close public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll to close public hearing.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on OSR 3. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Some move.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending ordinance number C-22-26 to modify exhibit B, conditions of approval relative to vacation of that certain 50-foot right-of-way Southeast 4th Avenue right-of-way adjacent to east lines of lots 7 through 12, Block 2, Lauderdale according to plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 2 at Page 9 of the public records today, County Florida, also adjacent to the west line of Parcellay, re-amended plot of Block 3, Lauderdale according to plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 49 at Page 39 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Southeast 11th Street, south of Tarpon River, west of South Federal Highway, and east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and OSR 3 is now approved on second reading. OSR 4, second reading, public hearing, amending the quasi-judicial ordinance vacation of right-of-way identified as a 25-foot wide by a 303.92-foot-long portion of Southeast 10th Court between Southeast 3rd Avenue and Southeast 4th Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sterman?
None.
Okay. No one has signed up to speak. Someone please move to close public hearing.
Some move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on closing public hearing.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on OSR 4. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Some move.
The ordinance has been introduced.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending ordinance number C-22-27 to modify exhibit B, conditions of approval relative to vacation of that certain 20-foot right-of-way known as Southeast 10th Court being a portion of lots 9 and 16, Block 2, Lauderdale according to plat thereof, recorded in Plat Book 2 at Page 9 of the public records today, County Florida, located north of Southeast 11th Street, south of Tarpon River, west of Southeast 4th Avenue, and east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and OSR 4 is now approved on second reading. Is there any additional business for the regular meeting, Mr. Cheveria?
No, none.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Spence?
I just wanted to alert the commission to state statute that affects adoption of ordinances effective on October 1st. Most of the ordinances that you adopt will have to be accompanied with a business impact estimate statement.
Is that just on development ones?
No, actually, development ones are exempt. So there's classes of ordinances that are exempt from the requirement of having this. So there is an exemption for about seven classes of ordinance types that would be exempt from having a business impact statement. But for general purposes, at the same time that we notice an ordinance for adoption, this business impact statement would need to be published to the public.
So the impact, the suggested impact on these ordinances will be attached to, like the CAM, or?
To the CAM, correct.
Okay, and so the public will know?
And published.
And published, okay, cool, all righty. Very good. Is there any further business to this meeting?
Yes.
Of the evening meeting?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, what happened to that walk-on item that apparently didn't walk on?
Which one?
Kaplan?
The 1515 building?
Police headquarters.
I'll let the city attorney provide an update on that, as I understand there was a legal review, received certain versions of agreement today. I have a question, because you were just asked what happened to that walk-on. When were we alerted that that was going to be a walk-on?
Verbally, it was gonna be, it was like the hokey pokey, walk on in, you walk on out, you walk on in. I never, I heard rumors that it was gonna be walked on today.
Well, I didn't hear those rumors, so I'd just like a little clarification on that.
Mr. Spence?
So, I can't address the rumors with regards to walk-on.
City manager, city manager-
About the hokey pokey?
He wants the do-si-do here. But the city manager did indicate that-
So, what I can say is that the negotiations are very fluid. We have been in contact with Cypress West, back and forth, dealing with terms. And we're, you know, they've been amenable to most of the concerns that we have raised. So we're coming close. I guess the question would be, when we and management comes, come to terms with Cypress West, whether or not we have the authority to execute the agreement prior to the next city commission meeting, because that's, that's going to be some time, time away.
Well, here's, here's a compromise.
Well, are we meeting?
We're gonna be back here on Wednesday.
Well, if they can come to terms-
Well, we could make it, well, we could either come to terms or authorize it on Wednesday, one way or the other. We can make that decision Wednesday.
Well, you want to make a decision before we come to terms?
How could we, how could we approve something we haven't seen?
Correct. Well, how could you see it on a walk-on?
No, no, but I'm saying, if it's ready by Wednesday, we could, we could be prepared to, to-
If it's noticed.
Correct. So the question is, we could direct city manager, if it's ready, they could notice it's put on for Wednesday.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't have to wait for the next city commission meeting to discuss this, is my point.
How many days notice do you have to give, Mr. Spence?
Forty-eight hours.
So, so we'd have to know by Monday whether or not terms have been-
Correct.
Okay. Well, Mayor, now that, I was gonna actually bring this up during my commission reports, because I, but now that Commissioner Sterman has mentioned this, I do have some issues, especially if we're gonna be seeing this issue later. First of all, I'm really disappointed that there's nothing on today's agenda addressing space for the police department. So city manager, can you just tell me why there was nothing on this agenda before, for this item, considering we've all agreed that finding that space was so paramount?
So, Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Spence has been in charge of getting the agreement ready for your review and final approval, and I know that they, that his office has been working with, with the proposer, and he should be able to answer all those details, but I don't have any, any updates that I can share.
So why is it, though, not ready? And I ask this question because I, you know, I've seen things in the editorial page, and I've seen a letter to whatever, we got an email, all of us. And as everyone knows, I have written to the city attorney about this, and he did share everything that he has found out, and everything that I was asking in my memorandum. So my concern is that, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that this delay is not because of this commission, that we have still consistently tried to receive information that we're just not getting. Am I wrong in this, or if I need to be corrected, please correct me?
So there are, there have been issues that have arisen as we've reviewed the lease, and as mentioned in the memorandum, one of the key issues is with regards to a lease with Kaplan University, our inability to see the terms and provisions of that lease. What we've agreed to is to have a termination and release executed by Kaplan. We have received a draft from Cypress West's representatives, but we still are not in communication with Kaplan and that, and we're, we're just going off of the, going off of the representations of Cypress West that this is indeed what Kaplan is agreeing to. So it's that and other issues. I wouldn't say that, with the exception of that, I wouldn't say that we haven't received answers. We have, we have received, we're in a active, as I said, fluid back and forth with representatives of Cypress West with everything except for that particular provision.
Well, I, I am concerned that we cannot have transparency when it comes to those leases. That's just one concern. But also, from what I've been reading, and I've been trying to compare information that was presented to us, and then also the fact that in your response to my memorandum, it was clear that we did not provide a fair opportunity for Cypress Corporate Center 1901 to actually provide a best and final offer after the city manager was negotiating with them, and then after the other side, I'm sorry, the other consideration, 1515 Cypress Creek, did present a best and final offer. Is that, is that an issue? I mean, do we as stewards of the city's financial resources have an obligation to provide that opportunity for both sides to prevent a best and final offer? Because I'm asking that question because we did receive not that long ago what I would consider to be a best and final offer. And when I look at what that is, I'm comparing square feet, 1901 in their best and final offer is offering us 37,153 square feet. When I look at an email from the chief of police to the city manager back on August 31st, it looks like he only requested 32,000 square feet. But now, we're up to 37 by 1901 Cypress Creek Road. 1515 is 46,591 square feet. However, the cost to the taxpayer, the cost to the city, 1901 is $970,000 a year. 1515, which you're still working with, looks to me like it's $1,444,000 and change with a 3%. Yes. So, plus, 1901 has no security deposit. 1515 is asking for a $120,000 security deposit. They're both at 24 months, which is great, because originally 1515 insisted on three years, but now they're down to two, and they're both fully furnished. So when I look at the comparison in terms of office space and cost and space needs, I need someone to explain to me while we are still making this so difficult on ourselves, why we seem to be jumping through the hoops here, bending over backwards with 1515, when the 1901 seems a much cleaner deal. No worries about leases, no worries about even what I'm reading in the paper about taxes. That's another question I have for the city attorney. You know, in the proposal, how is, quote, additional rent calculated? Because even if the city is tax-exempt, and I read conflicting opinions, I know that in the newspaper, Commissioner Herbst was quoted as one thing with regards to the taxes. The property appraiser and the mayor were quoted as the opposite opinion. But my question is, how is additional rent calculated? And if the city is tax, even if the city is tax-exempt, how are we protected from, quote, this additional rent increasing, city attorney?
Before he gets into that, so I was on the phone with Marty Care today, and he was planning on being here tonight to address that question specifically, Commissioner Glassman. But since this never made it on a walk-on item, I let him know not to, not to bother sitting here all night long, so, but I can confirm with you that the property appraiser has informed me today that since the city will be a tenant and educational institution will be a tenant, that that makes the building a tax-exempt property. will be a tenant, that, that makes the building a tax-exempt property.
I understand.
And he was happy to come again and explain all that to everybody in case it wasn't clear.
Okay, I just wanna add to that, because I also had a conversation with the property appraiser, and while that, all that is correct, my concern, and this is something that the property appraiser said that he would still need time to, to investigate, there might have been a gap in time prior to our, should I, should our city decide to take tenancy in this property. There may be a gap in time prior to now in which the property might have been subject to real estate taxes. And my concern was, number one, is that true? And were they, were they paid or unpaid? And if they were unpaid, the entity that owes it, okay, would be the same entity from whom we would be leasing the property. And that entity could add this on to the CAM and say, "Well, this is an amount that's due by, by the last landlord, and therefore, I'm passing it through to all the tenants, even though it was accrued beforehand, before your tenancy. I'm still want my, my current tenants to pay it." So, should we move forward with 1515, we would have to put a proviso in there that any, any taxes that accrued or should have accrued that are due and payable would not be the responsibility of, of the city going forward. And I think that's an easy fix, but I just wanted everyone to be aware of that as well.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, I believe that's already been done, but Mayor, I, I would just point out from, from an accounting perspective, there's no way that a prospective tenant is responsible for past due liabilities any more than we'd be responsible for prior water bills or anything else. That's not a current operating expense going forward. But I do believe that that was addressed actually just for a belts and suspenders approach, that just to assuage any possible concerns that you may have had.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Yes.
It's like Debbie does tell us. I too had a conversation with the property appraiser, Marty Care.
Has anybody not talked to Marty today?
Marty called everybody, I guess. I actually have not talked to the property appraiser.
Yeah, and.
You're on the no-call list.
It does look like, there are two things I wanna say. It does look, I, I agree that we would not be, we would still be tax exempt, but I did speak to the owner of the property, I think it was the last night, and he did confirm that if there was old, a gap in the tax, that we would not NOT, we would not be responsible and would not be passed along to us. He would absorb that himself.
Okay, and also to Commissioner Glassman's statement, the only thing is, Commissioner, that we're not really, I was told that we're not dealing with apples and apples here. I was told that, that the Kaplan building is hurricane-rated and the other one is not, but that hasn't been confirmed yet. So, we're, I believe that we're still looking into that. Is that not, is that not true, Mr. City Manager? Are we still looking into the, that statement as to whether or not the Kaplan building is hurricane-rated?
Yeah, I believe there was a request for city auditor to look into those details, and would like to ask the city auditor if he had any additional information he could share.
I, I do. I contacted the, well, part of your office, and I got in touch with Colliers, and they responded to me late Friday, and they, they provided information to show that the windows are 120 miles per hour.
Rated?
Rated. As far as the, the windows, have they ever been replaced in the building? They, they have not, but they have a, a recent annual inspection that was done on May 23rd, 2023. And the other issue I had asked about is the age of the roof, and a new roof was installed in 2020 with the warranty they provided to me.
Okay, so, so 1515 has a new, a new roof, and it has hurricane-rated windows up to, what is that, a category three or something? Category two hurricane? Okay.
But Mayor, if the city auditor has just told us that these windows have not been changed out, we've been told that this building is 20 years old. Now, logic tells me that a 20-year-old building does not have the most current hurricane standard with regards to hurricane-resistant, whatever you wanna call it. I don't even know if there is such a definition of hurricane-resistant. What about the doors? What about the building itself? But then again.
I don't know whether a Realtor should be giving us that information. Shouldn't an engineer be giving us that information? Pat? Could you put your microphone on?
It was, the, the documents are from the, the inspector. I, I have that available, and the, the warranty is also from the, the roofing company that was provided when it, with the dates it was installed in, I think it was from 2040, it's, it's under warranty. And I looked at the plans that I, I received from Chris Cooper's when the building was built in 2021, and they have the information on there as far as the pressure and suction information that equates to 120 miles per hour window resistance.
It wasn't built in 2021.
It was, no, I'm sorry, 2001, 2001, I'm sorry. And the, the current, the current standard for the windows is, is 185, but at the time, in 2001, it was a 120, and, but like, unless there's a replacement, if, I mean, if they were to replace them, they would have to be upgraded to the new standard, but as of right now, they don't have to do that with the, the windows that they have.
Do we know whether the other space had, had, were there windows and doors? Was that building analyzed for hurricane resistance? Do we know?
1901.
1901.
I don't have that information.
How old is that building?
I need Colliers to come in, in assist with that information.
I think they told us at the time, though, that it was not a hurricane-rated building. I specifically recall that.
I think you're right. I've heard that.
Just, just for comparative purposes, so, Pat, what, what's the age of the roof on the 101 building that we occupy?
Mike?
The 101 building, the roof is 23 years old, and also, they have annual inspections, but the, the, that roof at the 101 tower is 23 years old.
Any idea about the 1 East Broward building?
The 1 East Broward building? The one is, they, they had a term, the building windows are part of a original curtain wall system from 1984.
Wow, 1984, okay. That's the one we just moved into, right? Okay, good.
And then they also said the, the lobby windows are impact rated, and the, the windows in the, in the building have not ever been replaced totally in, in the, the building. And the age of the roof, 1996, that's, that's what they had, they told me, and it, but the third-floor roof was replaced in 2021.
So, if it was built in the 1980s and it withstood Andrew and Wilma, I think it's, I think we're pretty good there.
Well, I, I don't know, actually, the police station was built in the 50s and it's withstood Andrew and Wilma, so I'm not going with that one, Mayor.
Did it?
Right.
The building's still there.
So, Mayor, then my question is, why are we so worried about a property that's west of I-95, about hurricane-resistant, when buildings we're talking about now are right here, east of I-95, which is much more of a concern when it comes to hurricanes? The buildings that we're looking at on West Cypress Creek Road, correct me if I'm wrong, are not even in any kind of evacuation zone or hurricane zone or, or any of that, but I don't know why we're.
No, 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 wait, 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 wait. East of 95 is an issue with flooding, not wind.
No, that's not true.
Well, wait, 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 we're getting off the, we're getting off the track.
Right.
Wait, wait, the city attorney needs to come back to us with terms that, that are something that we can vote on or not vote on. I mean, I think that, right now, we're at terms, and, and I think that, I think you pointed out some, made some good points, Commissioner Glassman, in terms of the cost to the community.
I wanna confirm that, though. This is my research. I wanna confirm that with the city manager, that we're looking at $970,000 a year for 1901, $970,000 for the year versus $1,444,000 for the building that you're all looking at. I mean, I'll, I'll remind you that the last meeting, I voted no on this, because I am very concerned. That's a huge delta. So, city manager, am I, is my research correct here?
So, Commissioner Glassman, you are accurate. There was a revised proposal from Mr. Spitzer from 1901 building, and he offered what amounted to be 25,000 square feet plus 775 plus 9378.
Wait, I, I got 37,000 and change square feet, am I correct?
Correct. Plus another 2,000, so yes, that is, in, that is 37,000, and that is for a combined annual rent of 970,000 in 806.
And zero security deposit? According to his memo.
Yeah, no security.
No security deposit.
One thing, big deal.
Now, wait, can I, can I just finish, please? Thank you.
Yes, you may.
So, the 970,000 for 1901 Cypress Creek, and now, the annual rent for 1515 that you're all drawing terms on is how much?
I will ask Ms. Brooke Mosier to confirm, and that was, I believe, $1.4 million.
I don't have that lease in front of me right now.
Any recollection?
I think the 1 million sounds accurate.
1.4 million?
I would defer to, I, I would need to look at the proposal.
Okay, I, my reading was it's 1.4 million and change.
I think like 1.46.
Okay, 1.46. Folks, is anyone listening?
Wait, for how many square feet?
For 46,000.
For 46,000 versus 37,000.
That's 9,000 square feet more for $430,000 a year difference. That does not equate to 9,000 square feet. And I will tell you that even at the 37,000 square feet, that's 5,000 square feet more than the chief of police requested when he was asked to give a square foot needs assessment. Again, but 1515, in addition to, in addition to the $470,000 more per year, in addition to, they're also asking for a $120,000 security deposit versus zero for 1901. So, someone needs to just help me understand why we're still moving forward on this path.
We do get the security deposit back, though, right? I mean, it's not, that's not a payment, and we give it to them and we get it back. But I got a great idea. You know what? I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner, and instead of moving into the 1 East Broward building with all these administrative staff, I think we should move them all up to District 1 and put them in the 1901 building, and we could save millions. I think that's an amazing idea. Thank you for bringing it up.
You're very welcome. But that train has left the station. We already approved as a commission the lease on.
So has the other one, Commissioner. The other train has left the station, too. We voted on it.
Wait, yes, you voted on it, but I'm telling you right now, this is a bad deal.
Wait, 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 what did we vote on?
We didn't vote on anything.
We didn't vote on anything.
We voted on the lease the last time.
No, we didn't.
We did not vote on a lease.
There was a motion, there was a motion on the floor.
No.
There was a vote that was taken, and it was up to working out the final terms of the agreement.
Right, which we never achieved.
Right. And, and the goalposts keep moving on 1515. Folks, again, I'm gonna repeat for every taxpayer that's listening, that you are all considering, you're all considering a $470,000 increase over what we should be paying a year, plus security deposit, plus I'm not even positive about the hurricane rating, but I'm just saying, I think we need to really do our due diligence, that's all.
And I, and I agree with you, so this is what I ask, I'll ask the city attorney and the city manager, if you could please do the following. When we do come to a vote on how, how to place the, the police department in temporary quarters, can we ask you to present two leases? And the commission will vote on one or the other, up or down? One for 1901?
1901.
And one for 1515? And that, and we'll just, we'll, we'll compare terms on that day, and we'll decide, just don't present one, present two, and then we'll make a decision that way, because.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yeah.
Did we do that for 1 East Broward? Didn't we just get a, a lease and said, "This is where we're moving"?
No, we compared it to different places.
Four buildings.
Oh, yeah, we compared it to different places. We compared it to 101, we compared it to 1 East Broward.
101 didn't have enough space for us.
I don't know, I, I believe that we, that there was some shopping done.
Could we get clarity on that? Because we, I mean, it appears that we're getting off of what we had already agreed to, and we're rolling back. I don't understand why we're back.
Because it seems that the terms keep changing.
Yes, they do.
Vice Mayor, that's the problem.
They keep changing, and one entity.
Didn't we have the same thing, though, with the terms with West Marine, where we kept going back and forth trying to get that done as well? Did we bring that back? Did I miss that? Maybe we did?
What would be, what's the objection to presenting two leases and then we just vote on it? It's a very simple thing.
That's fine, that's fine, but I do want, first of all, I think that's a good idea, having two leases. That's, that's fine, I don't have an objection. But the other thing, I wanted to just roll back to something. We went from 25,000 to 30 some, and that's, how many more, how much more do we have at 1901, Mr. City Manager?
So, 1901, we have 37,000.
Okay, now, here's what's important to realize, too. First of all, it's not apples to apples. The mayor did point out that one of them is hurricane-rated. The other thing is that they have generators. Now, keep in mind, of the generators, 25,000 feet is generators, the other 9,000 is another floor, is that right, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
That floor, I believe, does not have a generator.
I'd have to verify.
I'm pretty sure. The generator was one floor only, so it's not apples. There's, there's a lot more that you have to think about, so.
Yeah, we can, we need to take that all into consideration. My, my problem is that on this issue, and I, this was in my memorandum, and the city attorney did answer that, it seems that one entity was always allowed to come back, come back, come back, even though it was after a deadline that was given, and even though that timeline was not accurate, as, as stated by the city attorney's office, we did not get truthful answers, we did not get the timeline presented to us correctly, and each party was not given the same opportunity. That is, that's very serious. In fact, city attorney, if you can help me understand, if we did not waive or consent for Colliers International Florida to represent both sides, are we even out of any kind of compliance?
It's not, it's not the city commission that would be out of compliance, it would be Colliers who has to, that, as I explained in my memorandum, has, well, both the city and Colliers did not comply with the notice to proceed, and Colliers did not provide notice of changing their relationship with the city from a single agent to a transactional broker in this situation, so, as I explained in the memorandum, it would be something that the city commission at its discretion would have to waive.
So, going forward, Mr. Mayor, you had a good idea. If you bring both, and we could decide what's important as far as hurricane-ready generators, the whole totality of it.
T totality of it, exactly.
And we'll look at, bring them two forward, and I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I just want us to do the right thing here, and I want us to do it, you know, in a process that's fair to all entities.
So, I, and I do understand that, I, my office just doesn't have the resources to, to deal with both leases, so what can be done?
Doesn't the landlord usually prepare the lease? The landlord prepares the lease, they submit them, and then we'll, and then we'll compare, and then we'll make a decision. Dwayne?
Today, we, we, today, we have our one, one attorney, real estate attorney, that's working on this 1515 lease, and we've gotten back and forth emails. I would really hate to put her in a situation, particularly with the other workload that she has of going back and forth with two different entities. I, I'm not opposed to having the term sheets, but, but expecting fully draft leases on both ends with our, our kind of stamp of approval is, is problematic. We can bring documents forward that are substantially complete, but we really hate doing work at, work on that level without warranting that, you know, we've completely reviewed these documents and we're comfortable giving you legal guidance on it. So, if, if you like them to present leases, and I think we've substantially worked up 1515, we've also worked up the document that was provided by 1901 for the last meeting, and depending upon what their changes are, we can use that as a base document and make the, make the changes to that document and present both, but I, I just, I don't, I don't wanna, yeah, I just don't wanna miss anything.
Yeah, I, I agree. Okay, let's go with that, then, all right? Because I think, I think, you know, we've, we've talked this, I wanna be fair to, to anyone who's participating in this, in this process, there, there, you know, there are qualities for 1515, there are qualities of 1901, 1901, so let the, let the commission make a decision and bring closure to this process. And, and I still wanna make sure that the police department weighs in on this, because in my, in my, my meeting with staff members on Friday, I'm not sure whether the chief had fully, had fully answered the amount of square foot that his department actually needs in order to, to allow his department to function over the next 24 to 30 months, so.
Well, he, he will make do with whatever we give him. He said this, he'll make do with whatever we have. From 87 down to 25. I don't wanna make him do.
We don't wanna make him do.
Mayor, it's 1026.
I'm sorry?
It's 1026.
What's?
We did it to 11.
You did?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 we did. We did it to 11.
We did.
That's why they're talking, so they know they have another half hour.
Yes. But remember, that also includes a gun range, that, that building. Now, we're, we're not looking for a gun range.
It's a hot tub, that's really getting.
Yeah, we're not looking for a gun range.
So, do we have, we have majority that says, "Bring, bring both documents forward, and we'll make a decision then." Okay. I don't know when "then" is, if, if it's available by the next time the city, city commission meets, we'll do it then, if it's next Wednesday, that's fine, and we'll go from there. All right, any, any further business? Any, any further business of the commission for the evening meeting? There being none, this meeting is now concluded. We will now resume our conference meeting.
Do you want to address the OPEB board?
You want to do OPEB? Okay. Let us begin. Well, if you, we're going to suffer, dear, you're going to suffer. All right. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst.
President.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
I'm, I'm here for which meeting now?
OPEB.
Yeah, okay, to that I'm here, yeah, I'm here.
Chair Rintellis.
Yes, I'm here also. Okay. BR1, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Quarterly Investment Report for the period ending June 30th, 2023. Anyone have any questions? There being no questions, there's no action to take on that. M1, Motion Approving the Minutes for the June 6, 2023 Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Board Meeting. Anyone have any questions? If not, would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Chair Rintellis.
Yes, and that M1 has been approved. Any other business of the Other Post-Employment Benefits Board Meeting? There being none, that meeting's concluded. Now, let us resume the conference meeting.
This is our last meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, sir. That is correct. So we, we addressed every item on the afternoon agenda except Commissioner Reports. So we'll begin with District One, Commissioner Herbst.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items I'd like to bring up. So I'm quite fortunate to have the Chabad Lubavitch in District One. And the Rabbi Moishemayr has expressed an interest, as well as the son-in-law Mendel, in seeing if we could add the word Chabad to the street name in the area. And so this is something that I brought up to the city manager and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the commission, make sure that, that you're supportive of the idea.
Which street?
It would be the one outside of the Chabad.
The Galt?
Would be probably, probably on that side street. I think we could explore that. I want to, I want to get just sort of a conceptual agreement that we could look into this and then we can work out the details as to where.
I have no problem. I don't know how, I don't know what the process is. Do we have to like notify the residents?
We've done this in a couple of other instances, for example, where we've added, you know, a secondary name to an existing street.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great idea, but I just don't know if there's a, what's the, there's a process. I know we got to follow a process.
There is, there is. And if you all agree, we could work with the commissioner to define that and bring that forward.
I think it's a great idea.
And, and the other item also related to the Chabad is an aruv. So the aruv is essentially, it's a, from a practical perspective, it's, it's a fishing line that's strung between telephone poles that creates an area.
A zone.
Exactly. And so as the, as the community out there is getting larger and larger, there's a need to expand the area a little bit. And so they, they like our, our, our agreement that we can go ahead and, and expand that.
To what, what boundaries are we looking at?
I, I will get the exact boundaries. They just asked if we'd be amenable to it. And I know the last time we did this was back when Nogal was mayor. So it's been, it's been quite a number of years since.
Well, that's a, but it's a permanent thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so what, so when Mayor Nogal did it, it's, it, did it disappear?
No, no, it's still there. And, and the, the community is growing larger. So they want to expand the boundaries of, of the, of the area.
Sounds good to me. I have no objection to that.
Okay, great. I'll be happy to take that back. I'll be going for, I'll be going over there for Rosh Hashanah dinner. So I will, I will be pleased to announce that the commission is on board with that. Thank you.
Very good.
And if there's any cost, I think it would be bupkis.
Bupkis, it will be bupkis, exactly.
You guys, I'm quelling over all of this talk tonight, Commissioner Herbst, Commissioner Sturman. It's just amazing. It's just incredible. Do we have in our, do we have in our process where the community weighs in on this at all or?
Well, that's what I asked, that's what I asked. I think there's a process for the naming of the street. I don't know about the.
Our policy requires 70% of the affected property owners to weigh in on, on it.
Well, to weigh in, what does weigh in mean? Does that mean be noticed or, or approve?
So once it's petitioned by the citizen, it requires 70% of all affected property owners currently addressed on the existing street to sign the petition. The petition shall submitted, be submitted along with an application. So we have a, a entire policy that is up, that is used through the transportation, transportation and mobility department.
Is it the property owners on both sides of the block or just on one side of the block?
On both sides.
On both sides of the block, okay.
And would that also include all of A1A? Because they stretch from Nick's restaurant all the way north along A1A. So what are the boundaries of that 70%? Including A1A?
It would be the segment of the roadway that they're, they're seeking to change the name on.
Is that a 350-foot thing or no?
No.
Okay.
Would that also include the way the street heads into Galt Ocean Drive?
That's what I was wondering. It's just the properties that are budding the actual roadway.
Okay, as long as you follow the process.
Yes.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes, mazel tov.
Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor.
No report tonight.
None tonight, okay. Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, and I am going to postpone several of the things I wanted to talk about tonight to the next meeting because of the late hour. But, but very quickly, congratulations to Hatch on 715 North Federal Highway. That was a great ribbon cutting. Everyone really enjoyed that day. Such a cool place if people like breakfast or brunch. Also, it was a pleasure.
Is that what it is, a breakfast or brunch?
That's all it is. They only open until 3 o'clock during the week and 4 o'clock on the weekends.
Okay, good to know.
Yes, and free parking in the garage just west of the restaurant, off of 7th, just west of Federal Highway. Also had the pleasure of joining Suits, Toledo's and Lipstick Foundation as they made the award ceremony for the Heidi Dennis Wonder Woman Scholarships at the Pelican Grand. It was a pleasure to join many of you at the pre-Labor Day event Beach Community Center on Sunday. Also, looking forward to the Citizens Committee of Recognition Awards on Wednesday, September 13th. And also on that day, Mayor, I guess we're going to be meeting with the rabbis on the 13th to kick off.
Yeah, everyone's welcome.
Yes.
It's at One East Broward. It's a meeting with the rabbis in recognition of Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah at 4:00 PM.
Yes, and I would like to wish all those that are observing Rosh Hashanah, that begins on Friday, September 15th sunset, through Sunday, September 17th. And that begins the High Holy Days for those that are celebrating. And that's, that's basically it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sturman.
Very quick, a couple of things. I want to thank staff for bringing forward that ordinance on vacation rentals. That's something that's very dear to my neighborhood. I want to thank, now, Alan, you're out there, correct? Do you want to wave your hand? There's Alan, thanks. I believe, tell me if I'm not mistaken, but again, this comes up in my neighborhood and my district a lot. After the flood, it seems like everything seems to be flooding again and again. It's been brought up, but I just want to remind people. I think of the $31 million that you had mentioned in the report, 25 million, you could just give a thumbs up if you could come on down, is for cleaning out the, the storm waters, is that correct?
The storm drains, you mean?
Storm drains. More than the drains that goes into what? Right, and that's a huge, huge, no, huge investment. Everybody knows that the drains need to be cleaned out. And this is, over the course of time, I think eventually that flooding that we get with, with storms is going to pass. Just know, people are concerned about that. Just to give people a heads up and thank you very much for that. And I do want to thank the mayor for joining me in petitioning, you know, Lamar, the county mayor, to try to get funds for the circuit. And so, as well as Tim Ryan is just trying to help us get some money for, for mobility. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, great. Just a couple of things, things coming up. Let's see. On September 11th, I invite the entire commission to participate in the 9/11 ceremony that we'll have again this year. It's again at 9:00 AM at the Fire and Safety Museum in, at, in Sailboat Bend. And, and Commissioner Glassman, you mentioned this, September 13th, we have the citizen recognition ceremony. That's at 11:30 AM at the Riverside Hotel. I hope everyone from the commission can participate. I'll be leaving September 14th to, to join other so-called big city Florida mayors. There's 10 of us. We'll be meeting in Tampa to discuss any statewide issues. If there's anything in particular you would like me to, to discuss at this meeting, please let me know. And last but not least, on September 16th, we're having the Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Chili Cook-Off Fundraiser at 1:00 PM.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I just may, when we schedule events like this, maybe we could take a look at the calendar because that is Rosh Hashanah. Out of respect, I don't know why we have events that fall on High Holy Days or, I, I mean, and I'm not just saying this because it's the Jewish High Holy Days, but I'm saying that I would think that we would give that respect to Muslim, Christian, Jewish holidays. People just need to, I think, look at a calendar once in a while, that's all. I, thank you for letting me vent.
When does Rosh Hashanah begin again?
The 15th in the evening through the 17th. So right in the, smack dab in the middle is this event. And I, I just find it just not courteous, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I guess that's it. It's getting kind of late. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. So just wanted to give you an update on the city attorney recruitment. Committee interviews with three candidates are scheduled for September 18th. We continue working with One East Broward to secure the space for the dais in the second floor. I, I just wanted to reiterate that, that was a process that we went thoroughly and secured many quotes from different spaces. And you all directed us to go to that, to, to get that quote and present it to you all. Additionally, Susan Grant and myself have been invited to speak on a panel to discuss our water treatment plant project at a P3 electrified conference. Senator Pizzo invited city managers and mayor to attend on September 15th, a meeting to discuss emergency management. And Senator Pizzo also will be doing a ride along with the police chief in the weeks to come. He wanted to just look at Fort Lauderdale and see how we operate. And tomorrow, I'll be attending Amazon Web Services Public Safety Panel, invited to speak on some of the things that we're doing for smart cities. And that concludes my report.
Oh, City Manager, you said the three candidates are interviewing. Interviewing with who? With, with our panel or who's there?
With the panel.
Okay.
Mr. Spence, do you have any report to make?
I do. At the last meeting, I neglected to mention that the longtime legal office manager for the city attorney's office has retired, Maureen Richards, after 17 years. She first started with the city under Harry Stewart, has survived under four city attorneys and has finally decided to, to retire under, under the interim. She has been a, she's been a very important asset to the office and allowed for some of that stability that she's seen throughout the changes in the leadership in the office. And her presence will be missed.
You know, which brings up a point. You know, another former employee came up to me not too long ago. I believe she said she worked for the city for like 27 years. And there was the given, she was given no particular acknowledgement or recognition of terms of service. I think that it should be a policy of the city that anyone who works for us more than X number of years should, I mean, I should at least be notified of that. I can present them with some kind of expression or proclamation that you don't have to present it at a meeting, but just give them some sort of recognition in writing from my office to, to at least acknowledge their long-term service. And I, and I, I think going forward, we should, if, is our HR people here? Yes, just in the future, if we, if you could let my office know and let the future mayor's office know going down the road, you know, anytime there's a, a long-term employee that's retiring, I don't know, what, 15 years would be a good number, you know, so that we can be notified, so that we can present something to them as they leave the cities and thank, and thanking them for their long-term service for our city, to our city.
And Mayor, if we could add to that list any interim city attorney who serves more than six months. And perhaps we could also extend that same kind of, thank you, sympathy, thank you, recognition. Thank you.
I'm, I'm actually thinking about some kind of.
Going away party?
Exactly, hazard pay, perk for something.
Combat pay, maybe?
Yeah. Okay, any further business of the commission? There being none, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
10:41.
And I just want to wish a happy birthday to Laura Reese.
Laura, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Laura.
When was her birthday? When was your birthday, Laura? Ah, I'm glad it's not tonight.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.